Okay, are you ready?
Not one moment.
And are you gonna do the N twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay, let's call to order the city council meeting special, what are we calling this? The special meeting for February twenty-second. Madam Clerk, do you have some first reading for us? You can do them both, but we'll do it after the roll call for the second one.
The procedures adopted for this meeting meet or exceed the standard set forth in Governor Newsom's Order N dash twenty-five dash twenty, which allows public meetings like this one to be held by teleconference to help the spread and help prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. At this time, I will conduct roll call, and I wish I asked the mayor to recognize me afterward to confirm certain matters for the record.
Thank you.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Veros.
Present.
Councilmember Zafar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
And Mayor Hudson.
Here, city clerk, you have the floor.
Based on the responses to roll call, the record should reflect that all council members can hear the proceedings clearly, and if there are no objections, the record will further reflect that each council member believes based on voice or facial recognition or otherwise that the persons representing themselves to be council members are in fact council members.
Yes.
Thank you. See no objection, I will turn the meeting back over to the mayor with a reminder that all votes must be taken by roll call.
Great, thank you. Public comment is now open, and this is for anyone that wants to speak to the item that is on the agenda, because it's a special meeting, it's a little bit different. But all of our attendees, as I look, seem to be people that are applying, so I don't think you want to speak to public comment, public comment going once, twice, public comment is closed, now is the time for item three, which is the Parks and Community Service Interview and Applications, our applicants for appointment. Before we even get into it, I'm gonna ask the question again, because we'll be clear for the people if they haven't heard it. The decision has to be made whether we're going to make this a four-month or a four-month and four-years, a suggestion was made, so he can make it again at the official meeting. I will go to councilmember Veros, what is your opinion on this, and we'll second your motion.
Sounds good, oh, right now or during the meeting you want to?
Well, this is the meeting, so go ahead. Before we even start, we'll let the people know what they're doing.
Okay, so my vote is to go with definitely four years, four months, because four months is definitely going to be a very short period. Who is going to be selected during this interview process, that candidate can serve for four years, four months.
Okay, any objections? Second, so far, let's do it as an official roll call, that's the decision. Four months and four years to the person we select tonight. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
And just to confirm, councilmember Veros, that was your motion, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Armstrong.
Yes.
Councilmember Veros.
Yes.
Councilmembers Zafar.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yes.
And Mayor Hudson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so now everybody knows what the scorecard is. Are you going to give them a brief update, or not update, but let's give them a roadmap of what they're gonna be doing tonight, if that's okay?
Okay, so each council member will ask one question. The first question will be from Mayor Hudson, Mayor Hudson will ask the question, and then the eleven candidates will each have their turn up to two minutes to respond to his question. The order is completely random, I will indicate who, which candidate's turn it is after each person. So I'll go ahead, and if everyone's ready, I can let the eleven candidates into the meeting. At that time, please be sure that your video and audio are both on. Let me go ahead and
We're doing okay. I don't see Molly Abreu on there, though.
She's a member of the public.
Okay. Richard and Steve. We're good? Okay, good evening, everyone. We will call you applicants, now panelists. We are each gonna ask you one question tonight, and as the city clerk explained, they will be randomly asked, each one of you, the same question that I'm gonna ask first, then councilmember Zafar, Veros, Armstrong, and Vice Mayor Perkins down the road, but we'll take the first question first. The question that I'm going to ask all of you is, do you believe we have enough pool space at swimming pools? And if not, do you have any suggestions? And who is our first panelist?
The first is Kumar.
Kumar? Good to see you again. What do you think?
Good evening, mayor and council and fellow president.
Yes.
So, one thing is, you asked the question, so do we have enough swimming pool? It's always, because growing community, definitely, there's always, we can say, it's not enough, but the suggestion is, we need to think utilization, and we need to plan for to bring any other opportunities, that's what I think.
Okay, our next contestant, I'm sorry, I guess I should be calling panelists now.
Sean.
Okay, Sean, same question. Do you believe we have enough pool space? And if not, do you have any suggestions?
Absolutely, thanks for the question. So, my first impression of that would be, whether I believe we have enough pool space or not, doesn't quite, wouldn't quite be an adequate response. It would be, you know, in a position such as this, it's not what, how I feel about a specific, a specific lack or, you know, lack of a facility or, you know, understanding the needs of a growing community, such as candidate Kumar said earlier, is kind of the role that I think this position would, would take on. So, understanding that we are growing, and we do have facilities in place already, such as Cal High, which has a wonderful facility that, you know, growing up, my friends and I would go to during the summer, you know, is there room for expansion of something that's already in place? Is there room for, you know, a Dory, Dory's facility at Dory High to also take on a similar role for their community? I think looking at those, those, that infrastructure that's already in place is kind of our first step to understanding and seeing how much use we can get out of those. You know, there's always room for, for growth, but do we need to build new infrastructure? Or can we utilize what's already there?
Sounds good, our next panelist, Christina?
Ravne.
Okay, Ravne?
All right.
I'll repeat the question for you, where'd she go? Is she on or on the phone?
She's
I have to see, okay, the question is, do you believe we have enough pool space? And if not, do you have any suggestions?
Well, I think there are a couple of things with that question. First, when you say pool space, I think who the users are. So, we have children who are using it for recreational purposes, have teens who are competitive swimming, and then we have adults who are using it either for recreation or exercise.
Uh-oh, we're freezing. But it is a good answer, if, if that's, if that's as far as you're gonna, we just, you just froze on us, Ravne, but actually, it froze at a very good spot. Okay, let's go on to the next person, Christina, thank you for that answer.
Dinesh.
Dinesh, the question is, do you believe we have enough pool space? And if not, do you have any suggestions?
Yeah, you know, you know, it's always interesting about that question, and it's who you ask, and, and, you know, when you ask it, too, and what time of year you were talking about. But I think there's a lot of things that go into, into that, in account, when you, when you want to see, is there enough pool space or not in our city? You know, if you look at the summertime, when folks are out there, and, and they want to get out there and swim, and, you know, have pool parties and get together, I think, you know, there's, there's certain times of days where the pools are crowded, and it's tough to, you know, get a spot, or, you know, be able to swim, you know, adequately. So, I think it depends, you know, when, you know, when you're asking, and what time of year and all that. So, I would say that it really depends, at times, yes, there is, and at other times, there's not. And the thing is, what can we do to alleviate some of that, those, the overcrowding? And, you know, looking at other opportunities, like right now, we have two big pools at the different high schools, you know, could we look at something with some of the open space and look at that, maybe even at some of the, the middle school areas, where there is a lot more space, and look at that as an opportunity? Or even another thing as well is look and see at some of the HOAs that have things, can we maybe work with as a city, partner with them, and look and see if there's some opportunity there to allow some of that stuff with the public? So, those are some things I would look at, but overall, it really depends on what time of year and who you're asking and when you're asking it. But, you know, I think definitely at certain times, it's, it's very, it's, it's very crowded, and we do need to look at other opportunities during certain peak season.
Thank you, Dinesh, our next panelist is city clerk.
Partha.
Partha. We get Partha in here, his question, same question, do you believe we have enough pool space? And if not, do you have any suggestions?
Hello, Mayor Hudson. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you're on.
Hello, Mayor Hudson, Vice Mayor Perkins, councilmember Zafar, Veros, and Armstrong, and the fellow, fellow participants. It's, it's a, it's a good question, because I do go to DVHS Swimming, but right now, I started again, after, after such a long time, so this is definitely a very close, close discussion topic for me. I also, I see there are two schools that has, that has big swimming pools, and there are obviously other private providers as well, like twenty-four, all the places as well. But since we're talking about city, let's talk about the city provided schools. So, these schools, the, the aquatic centers that are used by the adults, as well as baby students, maybe, maybe small kids. So, we have aquatic clubs, like Aqua Bears, as well as other school, school teams, and as well as recreations like myself. So, as Dinesh said, it's, it's all the depends on where, when you're looking. In the summertime, this is really packed, I see really hard to, hard to find pool space, but in the autumn, it's not. So, do we, do we, should we really go for new pools? Probably, if we look at the pick, pick, pick hours, if also, we can, can we try to build new schools, like a middle schools, as well as can we deal, we make a deal with the private providers, probably that could be an option. So, it depends on the funding, depends on the other opportunities that we have, probably we can think of a lot of other, other opportunity, other things as well. So, definitely, building new, new swimming pools is an option, since the city is growing. In two thousand thirty-five, the master plan projects that population will be ninety-six thousand, including the city walk projects coming up on that. So, definitely, that is something to look for, but also, there are other options as well, that I wanted to, if I, if I get the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Our next panelist then?
Patrick.
Patrick, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, let me ask the same question again, do you believe we have enough pool space? And if not, do you have any suggestions?
Well, thank you, mayor and vice mayor, and distinguished council members, and Christina. I wanted to, just to address that question, again, similar to what other people have said, great answers here, depending on the time of year, if it's more congested in the summertime, I do think, though, that we can utilize, as Dinesh said, you know, the, the high schools possibly, to expand, as well as maybe even the used access for the, the lot, you know, at the city center, maybe their pool, you know, local gyms. So, at my long decades in radio at KKQ, I've been able to work and partner up with cities, with gyms, so I think we would look into utilizing that before we look at expanding. I know the city is looking, possibly, people are interested in a water park down the road, I know that's interest in that, so that would be something down the road to, to look at for a water park for residents, but I do think that, again, depending on the time of year, it'd be good to look at our existing resources and leverage some of our relationships with private organizations to alleviate that space in the future.
Thank you. Our next panelist, please.
David.
Hi there.
Oh, it's, okay, I'm sorry, David, I, I go, yes, I thought you was talking to me. Your question is the same, do you believe we have enough pool space? And if not, do you have any suggestions?
Yeah, thank you for the questions, and I'll, I'll just be honest, the answer is, I don't know, but here's how I would look at the issue. One, what does staff recommend, you know, have they done any kind of studies on that? What are the statistics? How often are these pools packed? You know, does it make sense, given that, you know, are there just certain times when they're at capacity? Are there times when they're empty? Are there solutions to get around that? You know, the other thing I think would look at, are there other solutions? Are there private partnerships? Do we need a pool when we have twenty-four hour fitness? That has a pool, when Equinox has a pool, and I'm sure there's other pools in the facility. I think the other thing we need to look at is, is a priority, you know, we only have a limited amount of money, right now, there's gonna be a little bit less money coming in due to COVID, because there's less sales tax. So, does it make sense to make this our infrastructure project? And I think the last thing you have to look at is, like, is this physically responsible? Pools are great, but pools also require a lot of upkeep, they're expensive to build, so that, does that make sense? And, you know, I think lastly, but, you know, the most importantly is, what is the community want? You know, does it make sense, based on feedback that we've received from the community? We are a growing community, but our student population is actually dropping, so maybe it doesn't make sense to have a pool if there's potentially less kids. Now, I know those go in waves, and you would have to look at that, but these are the kind of things I would consider on that. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Next panelist, please.
Richard.
Yes, I am here, thanks for the question, Mayor Hudson, and
Do you want to hear it again, or you got it?
What's that?
Do you want to hear the question again?
No, no, I understand, I have had enough time to hear the question. I think it's a good question, because it's making me think, I hadn't, I hadn't anticipated that question, because I have looked at the needs we have for parks and community services, and that wasn't one of them. So, maybe I missed something, but I love the prior answer, because that is something that, you know, you would, as a commissioner, you would have heard what the needs are by the staff, and if that was a need, you would have to anticipate getting ready to transfer money, it would take a long time. So, you would need to anticipate where you're gonna put it. Right now, I don't think that is a high priority, because there are many other things that we need to do, other than that, but I think at one, at one time in the future, it will be a priority. This city has grown substantially from, oh, twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, twenty-nineteen, it doubled in size, and that was mostly in Dory Valley. So, there was a lot of things going on, a lot of projects that required attention, but right now, we've settled down somewhat, now we're looking at infrastructure, you know, upgrading and so on. I would say if we found the need, we would have to probably look at an alternative private club until we could get up the speed and get that plan, but that would take a long time to, it would be on the drawing board a long time, and it would be very expensive. Pools cost a lot to maintain, but I think we will need it in the future, because we're going to expand even further in the next thirty years, so, but that's something we would probably look at now and get ready for the next ten, fifteen years, but thanks very much for the question.
Okay, thank you. Our next panelist is?
Heidi.
Heidi.
Hi, thank you.
Do you need me to repeat this, or have you got it?
No, I think, I think I'm with, I'm with Richard, I think I've, I've, I have been thinking about it in the last few minutes. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to interview for the Parks and Recreation Commission. This has been an organization I've been paying attention to for a long time, through my volunteer work with the school district, with the local user groups and others. And thank you for the question, it's not one actually that was on my radar. It's interesting, I've had, two of my three children have been very active in swim team over the years, and we've spent a lot of time at Cal High and Dory, in very crowded conditions, but I will say right now, feeling very nostalgic about those crowded, very exciting social conditions. I've been very proud to be a member of this community and in the Dory Valley for the last a little over fifteen years, and I have been very proud of the facilities we have and the opportunities we provide. My first thought was, do we need more pools? But, you know, as I'm thinking about it, I think we have a major gap, potentially, in our recreational facilities, our swim recreational facilities, and that is, while we enjoy the benefit of our joint user agreements and our partnership with the school district, which really is a real, it's, it really says a lot about our community, that that is a creative way we found solution. But what we don't have is a place for seniors and preschool kids to take advantage of those facilities in non-summer days and hours during the school year. And if we're really trying to improve opportunities for our growing senior population, and while our younger children's statistics are going down a little bit, we will continue to have young families, and so I would want to look very carefully at that. At the same time, what are the priorities? You know, how do we value that against other higher priorities? So, I would say, I would want to look at it.
Thank you, Heidi, our next
Thank you.
Next panelist?
Eva.
Eva? Do you need me to repeat this, or?
No, I, I think I got it, thank you. Hi, everyone, thank you for allowing me to be here today, I'm very excited about this opportunity. Well, it's the way that the question is phrased that is making making me go, hmm, just a little bit, it's the word believe, do I believe we need more pools? And somebody said it earlier, but I, it doesn't matter what I believe, I really would want to look at the data and understand what problem are we trying to solve? And, you know, looking at the feedback from the community, is it a priority? You know, which age group are we gonna solve for? So, all of that matters, and I would really refrain from making any suggestions until I would understand what the problem is that we're trying to solve. So, you know, it could be a number of things, it could be, we're at capacity right now, that would be one problem we would solve for, it could be the locations, that the two, two largest pools that we currently have are just not in a location where the, the majority of the people want a pool. You know, is, what is the usage? What are the age groups that are using the pools? And I would want to analyze the dates and times where the fullest capacity is, and, and so, all of that exploration just helps feed a decision or suggestion. There were a lot of good ideas, you know, working with the communities, the HOAs, or creating a public pool that is not attached to a high school, so those are some ideas that I would want to explore, but it would really be difficult to explore further without knowing exactly what we're solving for.
Thank you. Our next panelist, please.
Steve.
Steve.
Mayor Hudson, I, I understand the question, and first of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to interview Vice Mayor Perkins and councilmembers. And I also, whether I believe we need a pool or not, I'm a big believer, and I think it's important that we have the research done and understand what, what the problem we're trying to solve for, what type of pool we're trying to solve for, for the community. So, I believe, first of all, you do the survey and get citizens' input on what, 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 what type of pool do we need, who's, who's the target audience, and if there really is a need for the pool, and then you leverage staff, and let staff come to the, to the, to the commission with recommendations. After that work's been done, and thoroughly vetted, I do believe you try to look for third options, right? Is that, I'm a big believer in how do we leverage, you know, our community as assets, and someone said it earlier, which I strongly believe in, is if we did need a pool, and we did have a pool that fed the need of the survey in the community, can we, can we, do we leverage our current assets and use them a lot more efficiently, first of all, to maintain costs? And then the second thing is, if not, can we partner with a business, whether it's Splash or other pools, pools that we have in, in the area, so we can leverage those facilities to, to their capacity? Then, if that's not an option, we look for a third option, which, you know, whether that's, you know, in Central Park or other areas, what staff would recommend, but the key is, is you gotta follow the process, and then use the data and make a decision. Whether I believe we need a pool or not, it's not important, it's what, what the city believes in, and what our community believes in. So, that's a process I would use, and then also make sure that, you know, it's budgeted for, is it budgeted from standpoint, what assets do we, where do we want to spend our money with all the resources we have? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Our next panelist, please.
So, that was the last candidate, however, Ravneet has logged back in, and she had about a minute and a half left for her question.
If you want to, but I have to tell you, I, I thought you answered it perfectly, but it's up to you, Ravneet, if you want to discuss it further. This is where you show how genius you are, and go, no, I just wanted to say thank you. No, go ahead, I'm just one vote, so others may want to hear what you have to say. In fact, because it was so goofy, if you wish to start over and do it, do it.
Thank you, I appreciate the second opportunity. So, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna stick with what I said before, that we look at who our end users are. Again, recreational younger swimmers, the swim teams, and then the older population, who's using it for exercise. What are their needs? My son currently swims at Dory Valley through one of the swim programs. When I tried to go and sign up for a swim spot in the summertime, I couldn't get one for myself. In the middle of the winter, at six AM, it's wide open. So, I think we need to look at again, who the end users are, what are their needs? Is there a way for us to work with them to figure out, you know, especially the swim teams? When are your hours crowded? How do we work that out with the senior population, with the younger children who need something? Everyone else said it beautifully, look at the data, all of that, I agree with. I will step out on a limb and disagree with many of my fellow candidates, and say that it is important, what I believe personally. I'm a member of the community, we are all members of the community, that is why we are applying to be on the commission, to make our voices heard. So, what we believe, what we learn is, in fact, to me, very important, and I feel like we should share those opinions. And, and other than that, again, I stick with, look at the end users, what is their usage, and how do we feel about that? That's it.
Okay, thank you. Our next, you're not going anywhere, you're gonna have more questions. Our next council member will be councilmember Sabina, Sabina Zafar, and she has a question, and it'll be pretty much the same procedure, she will repeat the question if you need it. Sabina, you have the floor, what is your question?
First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody for showing up today and looking so sharp. I don't think when, I, I can't remember the last time I was in a Zoom meeting with everybody was wearing suits and jackets, so this is a real pleasure, I appreciate you guys, really.
You're not getting it tomorrow night, either.
Yeah. With that, my question is, what interests you, and mine is probably the easiest one here, what interests you about serving on the San Ramon Parks and Community Services Commission? And if appointed, what unique perspective would you bring to this commission?
Our first panelist is?
Ravneet.
Ravneet, you get two in a row.
All right, let's, let's try this again. So, personally, I grew up here in San Ramon, I, my family was probably one of the first South Asian families in the city. I grew up playing sports here in San Ramon, you know, moved away in two thousand and two, after I got married, and I moved to Georgia. And it wasn't metro Atlanta, it was a rural county out in the middle of nowhere in Georgia, and that's where I had my children, that's where I really became an adult. And over time, as I coached my children in soccer and basketball, I became more involved in the Parks and Rec system over there. I volunteered, like I said, as a coach, volunteered as a parent, team manager, and then, as my children grew up, I began to volunteer on the Coney County, which is in Georgia, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. So, I've done this before, I really truly enjoyed it, Parks and Rec has been something I have been involved with from the time I was sixteen years old, not just as a participant, but that was one of my first jobs. So, I think I bring a lot of perspective in terms of experience, and then now, in San Ramon, And then now in San Ramon, I have four kids. All four of my children participate in different programs. In fact, at the end of this, this call, I will be headed out to Tiffany Roberts Field. For the next four hours for soccer practices. So. I'm an active participant. When I talked about end users earlier. Me and my family, we are current end users. And I feel like that perspective plus being a user, plus the unique history that I carry with this town. Goes a long way in terms of understanding where the Parks and Rec system came from. Where it was, where it is now, and where we could go. So I'm really excited. I think that we face a lot of challenges in the next few years with our growing population, and I think it's going to be a challenge. To maintain our spaces appropriately and incorporate the new residents to our city. Thank you.
Next panelist, please.
Dinesh.
Dinesh, you have the floor. Sabina, you want to, and after this, I'm gonna let you go ahead and Sabina.
Dinesh, do you, do you want me to ask the question again?
You know, I, I think I got it. If I, if I missed something, please feel free to, you know, just let me know that I, you know, I need to expand if there's anything I forget. But thank you again for, for having me, you know, on this, this meeting today. Yeah, I, I think, you know, I don't know, maybe Rob Neat and I could probably compete for how, how long we've been here, but. As you all know, I mean, I, I moved here in 1979 and, you know, I know Dave's laughing because he probably is gonna say he's been a year longer, another year longer than me. But anyways, you know, I, yeah, I, I mean, I just love the city. I mean, for forty-two years, called this place my home, came back to raise a family. Also have four kids and really been very involved with a lot of the park and rec activities. You know, and, and I think a lot of those gave opportunities and were stepping stones for what my kid, you know, our kids' passions are now, which is really, which is great. And. You know, for example, my youngest probably, you know, got into drama through some of these programs and now is an advanced performers. And really flourishing in that and, and has just done, you know, great, you know, and, and others have participated in, in soccer and. Basketball and, you know, baseball, softball, and I, and I've coached for a lot of twelve years too. So for me, really the outdoors, coaching sports, really connecting, you know, with the outdoors and the community is, it's always been big. But what I, what I also find is that, you know, that I think is, is important, you know, for me. Is that is for us to make these programs really kind of multi-generational, have opportunities for folks at all different. Ages to be able to participate. And I love that about San Ramon. I mean, you can have like young kids participate in things, you know, teenagers, middle-aged folks like myself. And, you know, senior citizens and, and it's, and it's great. And so, so those are some things that I really see. That, you know, that really, that I'm very impressed by and, and really enjoy. But I, I also, as a physician, would like to have a lot of focus on health and wellness in this, in our community. And I think, you know, we have a very, you know, we have a lot of folks that love the outdoors, but would like to promote more of that and really try to take that to the next level. So that's another reason why I'm very passionate about parks and recs and would love to serve as a, you know, as, as a commissioner for San Ramon.
Thank you.
Did I answer everything, Sabina, was there?
Yes, you did. I appreciate it.
Partha.
Partha, and I will repeat the question because I know after a couple of people talking, it sometimes gets lost. So. What, what interests you about serving on this commission in San Ramon? And then what unique perspective will you bring to the commission?
Sure. Thank you, Sabina. I'm a very happy San Ramon resident with my wife and two daughters for almost eight and a half years. And I do build a very deep-rooted community connections. Because we started a new nonprofit organization named Agamoni almost four and a half years back. That was the first thing, like, we tried to build a community. Where people can help each other and build something from the ground up and, 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 and provide something unique to the socio-cultural environments. So that we, 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 we do the, one of the biggest private events every year in the city center, the central park. In, in support and in partnership with the city of San Ramon, where almost three thousand four hundred, over two thousand to four thousand people. Over the weekend, every year on that, we serve that. Along with that, so that is my community service and I also do a lot of community philanthropic work. We do COVID nineteen, we provide, I provided vegetarian food to the Indian community couple, as well as clothed masks to the, to the hospitals. Also, at the same time, I do, I have a privilege to serve two of the communities, two other committees. One of the library committees, as well as currently I'm a member of the art advisory committee as well. And I do also serve and work with the San Ramon Valley Diversity Coalition. So this is the community side on this. So I work on this both sides as well. And though I have also helped and supported to build the data for our master plan by some. Working with two focal group on that. So with this, both sides, from outside, from inside, I do feel strongly. That I have a stake in the, on, on the PCS commit, committee to work with them. And, and then I do feel that I can actually add a lot of diversity of ideas and thoughtful opinions. If I get an opportunity to serve as a PCS commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick.
Yes, thank you. So I've moved to San Ramon about nine years ago and, and counting. And I don't have a family or wife or kids yet, so I hope to someday so I can have, here in San Ramon, have a wonderful message like some of you. I have always been interested in public service. And in high school, I volunteered for the Youth Service Corps for the City of Fremont and their Parks Department and developed a love for parks. And community service ever since then. In recent years, I've been on the Arts Advisory Committee like Partha and Dave here. It's been a pleasure. I've worked with the. You know, we've worked with the Social Justice Coalition there, the Cultural Growth Fund. As well as I'm also on the San Ramon Art Foundation. And I also think I bring a really unique perspective. I've been on, worked in radio for KKIQ and KKDV for decades of experience in radio, and I have worked with the City of San Ramon. To promote some of their cultural diversity events in the past, like the Holly Festival, their Bishop Ranch. I've also worked with. The San Ramon Art and Wind Festival with KKIQ in the past. So I've kind of been on both sides of it and I've worked with the. San Ramon Education for Run through KKIQ and very, various other cities like Lafayette, Danville. And many others to promote their events, to help drive people there. I've seen how culturally diverse San Ramon has become in the last. You know, twenty years or so, and I've helped some cities tailor their messages to help attract. And address these concerns as San Ramon has a booming population as well as aging and youth. So we need to address that with. More shaded area, more benches, more parks, as well as youth programs and physical activity programs. So. Just so many things to do, so many challenges ahead. I'm excited and I hope to get this opportunity. To be on the commission. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
David.
Hey there.
Hey, do you want me to repeat the question?
I'm good. I think I got it. Cool. So the simple reason. Councilmember Zafar is that I love San Ramon. I feel very blessed. To live here. It's a, it's just a great community. I can't say enough things about it. You know, I think I bring a perspective that a lot of people bring who are moving here. I mean, I moved here because it was a safe community. It had great schools. So, you know, one day when I have kids, they can go there. And it was affordable. It's just, it, it's a lot nicer place than a lot of other places in the Bay Area. You know, and I think it's an exciting time to be in San Ramon because we have a, you know, the population is changing. It's becoming more diverse. I serve on the Arts Advisory Committee as vice chair and I serve on the Arts Foundation. And I think we have a great opportunity to combine arts and the parks. And to build community and to learn about other cultures through that. So that's what really excites me about the, you know, Parks Commission. And, you know, I think lastly. You know, I'm a tech lawyer by, you know, day, that's what I do for a living. It's a fine living. I have no complaints. But I would like to do more with my life and I've, you know, I've developed these skills as a lawyer that I went in debt for. And I would like to serve beyond, you know, a corporation. I, you know, I'm the son of a factory worker. My mom was a McDonald's cashier. I'm the youngest of four kids and the only one to graduate high school. So I feel very blessed, but I also feel like I have an obligation to give back to the community. And, you know, try to maintain this great community that I've lived in, but also see it grow in, in great ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard.
Thank you very much for the question. I, I understand it and I can respond to it. I moved to San Ramon because this was the first city that I took my family to because I loved the area. I love the environment. I grew up in Los Altos, couldn't afford anything over there. But this area reminded me so much of Los Altos Hills, right next to Los Altos where I live. And I love the beauty of the hills. And, you know, I, I worked for a long time. I retired a few years ago. And I really want to get involved. I've started to get involved. I've taken some of the classes that are offered. The, the planning class, the Police Academy. I signed up for the government one-on-one, but that got canceled. But slowly but surely, I have been getting more and more involved and I want to take the next step. We have a rich history here in San Ramon. And that is just one aspect of the Parks and Recreation Committee. We just have so many areas, seniors. Teens. I think my, my ability goes to all those areas. I was very much involved as a young person. I was a high school president, student body president. I got involved at a young age and I understand what teens go through. And now I'm on the other end of the spectrum. I'm in the senior category. But we are so good in the city to our seniors with food, with, you know, busing them. We look out for everyone and we are very diverse. We weren't that diverse when I first came here, but I think now. We can look back. I think we're a model of diversity where we all get together. We want what's best for our children. We want to preserve the ridge lines, the beauty that we have, and I would like to be a part of that activity now that I have the time to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Heidi.
Heidi, would you like? No, I'm good. I do want to point out Sabina that. I am not dressed like the others because I'm in Pahoe, just off the ski run, so ski sweater time.
I can tell. I can tell, you look great.
Anyway, thank you again for this question. It's, it's interesting because there's so much I want to say about this. I think one of the, one of the most compelling interests for me in serving is. The area I want to make a contribution is building community. We have an amazing community. This community has been around for more than a hundred and fifty years. The city has been incorporated. For what, forty years almost now? And I still feel like we have work to do in bringing all of us together as a community. I think we have. Aspects of the community we identify with. I think though. The city center, the city walk, the central park area and the plans and the, the thinking around that, the trails. Adding the, adding shade and, and park benches, the Iron Horse Trail, all the things that we've looked at in the master plan. That we're thinking about are really, really important, but I think also bringing a sense of community together, having traditions. I think Parks and Rec is, is very fundamentally tied into that. My kids have probably participated in every single thing. I bring a unique perspective in having served in government, in law enforcement, with the Forest Service, US Department of Justice. Being an attorney for a number of years in Washington DC in the Bay Area and for the last sixteen years, having the opportunity to be. A community volunteer. I've been active in PTA at our council level, active with the school district. Served in Dordie Valley at Live Oak and Dordie Valley High School as president, communications. And programs have actively worked to bring our community together through festivals like International Festival and Harvest Festival, and I'll stop there. My time is up.
Thank you.
Eva.
Hi Sabina, thank you. I, I got the question, so thank you. You don't need to repeat it. So what interests me is that I have always been active in every community I've ever lived in. My kids, when they were super little, grew up in Castro Valley Schools and then we moved here to San Ramon. We've been here for. Ten years now. And I have three kids. They've all been through the school system, which is great. And, you know, I also am an outdoorsy kind of person. I, I, I'm a road cyclist on, on the weekends and I ride all around on these. Bike trails almost every weekend and I would say that I have skin in the game. I, you know, my kids, we all use all the parks, we go on the trails together and, you know, the road cycling and. I'm also an avid gardener, so when, when we start talking about the community garden and, in fact, I just applied for one of those lots over there. You know, I just think that I'm very, I've always been active in all those communities, but not in a formal way. So I've never been on a city council or I've never been on acting in a formal public service role. And so it's, I'm at a point in my life where it's time, I need to do this formally. And just start being part of the decisions that are being made for the community that me and my kids live in. My unique contribution is really around my, my natural. Nurture by nature is one part. I do organizational change management as a career, and so my stakeholders are always the first thing that I think about and what impacts them. So I'll just stop there.
Thank you.
Steve.
Thank you, Councilmember Zafar. I have the question. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. The answer to your question is a couple of things. First of all, when I, my interest in being in parks, so you have a little background, but the answer, my interest right away is when you look at our parks. It's, it's one part of our city government that touches almost every citizen, right? And then, and also think about as parks are great recruiting tools. We have people come in and visit our city. A lot of them come to our parks and that's our first exposure to our city, whether we want people, you know, as we get people to live here and, and, and really enjoy our community. And why I say that is. As I was president of San Ramon Soccer, we had lots of tournaments. And I'll never forget, when I was walking on tournaments, we had a lot, a lot of clubs come up to me and say, boy. You guys have some of the most beautiful parks. I really love this community. And I think the parks is a great outreach. From a standpoint of recruiting people back to the city, but also it is a one. I think organization that can touch our community and we need to continue to over-deliver to our, our expectations for our citizen parks. And, and where, what, what perspective I bring to this. Parks missions, a couple of things. One, I believe I can look around corners. In other words, think about that as trends, right? So how do we get ahead of trends? Years ago, think about cricket. Years ago, no one really thought about crickets fields. And right away, we have so many people within this community playing crickets without a facility to play crickets. We've had great progress. But we ought to be able to get ahead of those type of trends. I don't want to think about dog parks. During the pandemic, we've had many people buy dogs, bought to get dogs. It's been a trend within our community, well, actually within the nation. How do we as a parks committee try and get ahead of those trends? So it's not costly to the, to the city to make sure that we meet the needs of that. Of the, of the trends. And the last unique perspective is, is user groups. As being in soccer and baseball, I think we can leverage user group as part of the user group. And I think how do we leverage users groups to help develop our parks and invest our parks? So perspective I do is leveraging that part of our community. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Kumar. You're on mute.
Sorry, let me test. Somebody has to say it. Sorry about that.
You want me to repeat the question, you're good.
Yeah, it is a great question. Let me say it. How did it land up San Roman even? Two thousand fifteen, before a lot of friends moved to San Roman, they asked me to move here. They said, oh, too far away because I cannot drive to work. But finally I landed up in San Roman. I really believe in San Roman is a great place to live. And it's the parks are great. I mean, fifty-seven Park, I never seen any city has. And it's a real great community. Not only that, the open space trial, women, I enjoy. All the thing is because I'm a runner. I always run, run with the group. And it's, and another important thing is I, from believer. I'm a founder of a nonprofit organization, Ideal Kids, which helps develop. I'm a founder of a nonprofit organization, Ideal Kids, which helps develop healthy habits for the young kids. This is a great place to at least the park or wherever, all areas, kids can run and enjoy. At least they develop healthy habits. It's a really great place. And what I'm really exciting to be in the commit, the, the, the commi, committee. The important thing is I went through this, our master plan, I'm really, adds up all that the committee existing team put together and did a survey and there's a, a top 10 opportunity they identified. It is really very exciting. The master plan is really very impressive for me. I went through the open space and the Iron Horse Trial or seating or cricket pitch or biking, walking lane. It is a very impressive to say these are the things we need to look at it. It's not only one younger generation, the seniors and all ages and how we can bring diversity. It's not like one community or it's a multicultural, how we cannot try. So that's where I want to contribute more.
Thank you.
And Sean?
Yeah, you don't need to repeat it. Thank you. So first of all, you know, I'm excited that I got to go a little later in this round. I like to listen before I speak. I'm a firm believer in, in listening to everyone before I start running my mouth so that I'm pleased with this, this second turn here. So my, my why is, you know, I'm a teacher in the community. I grew up here. My mom's also a teacher. I coach. I'm the director of high school hockey just down the way in Dublin. You know, I started a hockey team for my, my high school and, and I played hockey, ice hockey at San Jose State. So I'm, I'm an active member by choice, right? I'm obviously a little younger here. I, I don't have people that are dragging me somewhere. I, I want to be involved because I enjoy it. My undergraduate degree is in recreation management. I also am the recreation manager for San Ramon FC along with my teaching position. You know, so I really, I truly enjoy recreation and all that goes into it. So as the youngest panelist, I think that brings a unique perspective. I, I recently purchased a home here in, in San Ramon over the summer. I'm getting married in June. You know, so I'm, I'm kind of at the infancy of where a lot of the fellow panelists are. But I see myself being active now. That's why I'm, I'm taking this, this step. And I see myself remaining active, you know, 20, 30 years from now. There's, you know, we, we keep mentioning challenges, challenges, challenges. That's kind of been the theme of 2020. But I'm, I'm starting to look at it more as opportunities. The way that we've grown over these past 10 months has been incredible. From what we're able to do on Zoom teaching to, you know, to putting a vaccine out in 10 months. It's, it's really opportunities for growth. And I'm excited about, you know, how accessible I personally am with the, the amount of people that I see each day just by the work I do and how I can grow and develop that through this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last candidate for question two.
Okay, Shridhar, you'll be asking the third question. And again, the selection of when people will be asked to come on for the two minutes is random. Shridhar, would you ask your question? And you can run it from there.
Thank you, Mayor Hudson. So Christina, do we have, or shall I first speak the question and then, okay, sounds good. So my question is, please share your thoughts on our parks and community services, community stakeholders, and highlight some of their requirements that you are aware of.
So the first candidate is David.
Can I ask a clarification question before I, I start?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah. So, so when you say stakeholders, I just want to be clear, like what you're saying. Are you, are you just leaving that up to me? Or is there something you have in mind, like city staff or whatever?
Oh, stakeholders like community residents, all the users, consumers.
Gotcha. Okay. 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 I'll be the guinea pig on this one. So, yeah. So I, I, I think the, really the question is, is, you know, you, you're here to represent the community and, you know, you have your opinion and this is representative democracy, not true democracy, right? But I, I think it's really important not to make up your mind before you make a decision and that, you know, you read the, you know, the staff report, you engage with the community, you talk, you know, to your neighbors, people that reach out to you via email, people that show up at the council meeting or the commission meetings to give voice to it. Although I, I do think, you know, there could be a vocal minority sometimes in our community that there may be on next door, they're yelling, but they don't always represent it. So I think it's really, you've got to have a 360 view. You need to talk to various people, understand things from the city staff. You obviously can't talk to your other commission members under Brown Act. But you want to get as much information as you can before you make a decision and you want to, you know, engage those people. You know, if there are people that you know in the community that are, you know, aware of these issues, you know, you want to reach out to them. You want to have a call. I have no problem changing my mind. You know, I will change my mind in the middle of a committee meeting sometimes on the arts committee because someone will make a compelling case. And I'll think, hey, you know, I hadn't actually thought about that. So for me, it's important to keep an open mind to, you know, have your pulse on what the community is saying and to reach out to those folks who, you know, have some expertise in that area. One of the funny things, I only have 20 seconds here, but you know, Lake Annabelle, my, my neighbor, 30 years has lived here, had no idea that it was open. Now, I know that's a new thing, but that, that, that's just an example of, you know, you need to speak to people, talk to them. A lot of people just aren't aware of what's going on. So, you know, you need to be as open and as engaged with communities you can be. Great. Thank you, Shridhar.
Thank you.
Richard?
Thank you very much for that question. And I think when you ask that question, you have to look at all the various elements that we have in the city. You know, we talk about how we have a lot of seniors in the community, but we also have a lot of youth. And when you look at the seniors, I think you look at the Iron Horse Trail. You look at seating, you look at shade. It gets very hot, obviously, in the summer. And you have to think about our seniors that way because you want to be able to have walking loops where they can get back and not be out too long. As far as the youth, obviously you have swimming, you have basketball, you know, we want to have, you know, lighted basketball court. So that's very big for the youth. And then you have the families who are participate in the parks on both the, in their neighborhood and in the regional parks. So you want to take care of them. You want to look at the west side of the city to make sure that we are going to have enough parks there because we have so many in the Doorty area. So, you know, I think you have to look at all elements. It's not just one group. But the main thing is that we have our parks and community services because we want to have great activities for our families. And we want to have a healthful outdoor environment. And I think one of the elements or one of the points I see when you look at our parks is that the bottom line is you want to have a fun experience for everybody here. Especially in the time of COVID, everybody's, you know, been walking outside more because they've been stuck in their houses. I think the staff has done a great job trying to, you know, kind of change the little bit how they do business for this last year, but it's been still very helpful. And I expect that we're going to continue to do well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina?
Heidi?
I'm so sorry. I was actually supposed to be running a diversity thing tonight and I'm trying to help them from afar, but I'm trying to also shut them down. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about this. In terms of community parks and the community stakeholders, I think this is a, you know what, I'm gonna, I need to log off of this. I apologize. I'm really sorry. I've had the opportunity to be involved with a number of the user groups and actually work with Mike Finelli and the folks at the, the staff at the Parks and Recreation Department. We've been able to coordinate activities when they impact both the school and say the user groups. I was involved in planning a lot of events where there's joint use agreements across the district and the city. I also, like Steve, was very active with San Ramon Soccer, now San Ramon Football Club as president, as executive vice president. And I was really humbled to be asked to come back after my tenure on the board to serve as executive director on an interim basis as we developed that position. And it gave me a unique opportunity like, like Steve, but also a unique opportunity to really learn more about the user group, how we allocate, prioritize and provide opportunities for everyone to participate, how we are growing the sports and the opportunities as our community diversifies. And that has provided a good opportunity to better understand what's happening in the city. I also was fortunate to be asked and have the opportunity to serve on the fiscal, San Ramon Citizen Fiscal Task Force, where we looked at budgets and priorities and across departments. Likewise, with leadership San Ramon, being able to better understand how the different community entities come together to work and support and use the recreation opportunities here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eva?
Do you mind repeating the question? I just want to make sure I understand it.
Sure. Please share your thoughts on our parks and community services, community stakeholders, and highlight some of the requirements that you are aware of.
Okay. Yeah. So, you know, I, I always think that any decision we make or any priorities that we have are really targeting what the community wants. So looking at the data is always the first thing. So understanding, you know, their feedback. Data is one, one thing. So there's a lot of, 90% of the stakeholders want to be in one with nature and they love to walk and they like to, to be on the trails. And so understanding that is, is part of it. And also just getting out there and talking to folks, talking to people in the community, active listening without forming an opinion and just listening to what it is they, they want, they desire, where they, they think the gaps are because perception also matters. And I think making sure that we're inclusive and our, you know, our demographics are, you know, ebb and flow and they, they are changing. And we want to, I want to make sure that any decision we make is very inclusive with our communities. And there's pockets, right? So there's pockets of different communities that have different needs. There's different age groups. So just making sure that we understand who our stakeholders are, what they want, what their priorities are. And I think by looking back at the survey data, that tells us a lot. You know, with what we have to offer, I, I think we do a good job offering, meeting needs of people. There's still maybe some work to be done with businesses and COVID, maybe dropping the revenue a little bit. So we might have to rethink a couple of things as far as budget goes. But I think we do do a good job. I, I would probably close the gap with just, maybe it's not really a gap. It's just being more mindful and continuing to be fully inclusive of all of our, all of our neighbors, no matter where they're from or how long they've lived here and all age groups.
Thank you.
Steve?
Councilmember Verst, do you mind repeating the question one more time for me? Because my computer broke up. Thank you so much.
Sure, Steve. Please share your thoughts on our parks and community services, community stakeholders. So our PCS community stakeholders and highlight some of the requirements that you are aware of.
Okay. First of all, for the Parks and Community Service, my, and my overview thoughts is I think we do an exceptional job. And I've seen that through feedback, as I said earlier, from people visiting the city and, and clubs coming in or a visitor, because we have amazing facilities, our parks are well maintained. We also offer great services through our programs. And you take a look at some of the programs that we have through the parks along with also the, our services we offer through like, when art wins. So I think as we take a look at services we, we offer, we provide many opportunities for our citizens to come together. And, and the parks and our community services are really nice stuff to make sure things are clean and sanitized, especially in this time period. Are there opportunities? Absolutely. And how do we identify opportunities? I think we talked that a little bit, but one is we talk to stakeholders, people who use the parks, use our facilities. One, are we meeting or exceeding their needs? We, one example is, is user groups, right? How do we continue to leverage feedback with user groups? Remember, these are leaders from all different organizations. Others is our seniors. We have seniors advisory committee which reports into the parks. How do we continue to get feedback? Are we exceeding and meeting their needs? And also what do they see as some future needs? So we need to continue to work with our, our stakeholders who we already have committees of to get their feedback on, what their needs. And then I personally think an opportunity is how do we incorporate them more within the park community services? Whether it's as we design parks or design a senior center, maybe there's some type of additional investments you can bring. And also the last thing is, another stakeholder is, is, is our businesses. We have lots of businesses in this community. And how, instead of having the people go out, how do we get more of our businesses involved in the parks committee and also in the city? So that way, we, they have more ownership in the place that they do business and also want to get back into the city. So I think that's a major stakeholder that we need to incorporate and get into the parks committee. Thank you very much, Ms. Councilman Verst.
Thank you, Steve.
Kumar? Kumar, you're on mute.
One minute before I started. Sorry about that. Okay. Hey, thank you for us for the question. Really great question. And definitely, listen to the stakeholder. It is an improvement opportunity. And I already brought it a couple of things to the team. If you look at it, I mentioned before, I'm a runner. When I was running the Iron Horse Trial, people always ask a couple of places if they do have this water fountain. And one of the areas, if you look at it, Pine and Bollinger, between the Calai backside, they are seriously looking for a water fountain. That was the one big gap people brought it up. And another thing is I do really constantly talk to people, even the park. People mentioned if it is younger kids, they have a lot of opportunity, but it's after nine year, 10 year, even bigger kids, not many opportunities maybe we should think about. When I was deeply conversation, what else are we looking for? Somebody was mentioning even South Korea, even I also visited, some of the parks, they have a mini fitness. It is a very exciting to, I never seen any places. Maybe we should think about, develop a healthy lifestyle we are talking about. That is another addition thing is I'm thinking of should we invest and exciting to bring more people to get exercise in the park level. That is another thing is I'm looking for it. And always, if you look, look at it, the community, when you walk a trial, people are some of the places are not really walkable space because it is slippery. Maybe we can think of that area. Also, we can at least look at it, Ivy Hill, that the hill is a really good area to look at it, expand it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So our, our stakeholders are, you know, what everyone here has mentioned already, our sports, our dog walkers, our joggers, our, our seniors, our schools. As a teacher, as a PE teacher, you know, I've sent, I've sent emails out to, to understand certain things and, and gotten the feedback that I need. So I've, I've been on that side as the stakeholder. And, you know, someone else mentioned the inclusivity that we, we need to be mindful of, right? Through my work with SDC, which is a huge population, we have a wonderful program in San Ramon Valley Unified that draws a lot of families to our district. I work with Special Olympics. There's, there's really growth opportunity there in stakeholders. You know, being in contact with those 1,300 Uh, you know, being in contact with those thirteen hundred plus rec families. Uh, the families at Twin Creeks where I teach, living in the neighborhood where my school is District One, which is, uh. Uh, you know, Vice Mayor's District, I believe. Uh, there's, there's lots of, of opportunity for people to, to reach out and for me to reach out to, to the people that, uh, share the same. Spaces as I do. Uh, being on site with those families at soccer and at school and engaging in the staff. To, to understand something is simple, you know, in the fall here, came up with the, the mowing schedule and being able to talk with those stakeholders. The, you know, the staff that's, that's cutting the lawn and understanding why they do something, being able to turn around, write to a parent and say, hey, this is why this is done. Those are, those are big things, but at the end of the day, you know, it's not based on my agenda. Uh, I'm here to serve and, and with that mindset, I create a, an open channel to hear from, from all those stakeholders. And engage in the community, cultivate that dialogue, uh, with, with all those stakeholder groups. And, and even those that I may not disagree with, they have wisdom that they can share and then I can learn from and we can build on.
Thank you, Sean.
Rodney?
Hey, so the way I'm understanding the question is sort of a multi-level question. We have the discrete groups like San Ramon FC and we have, you know, Canyon Creek Little League. And we have the individual users of the parks and we have them as families and we have the seniors. So these are all discrete groups, but like everything else in our lives, they all overlap at some point. So while San Ramon Little League and San Ramon FC might share the need for park space at the same time. And we might have families that want to use that space at the same time, our job as commissioners is to sit here and evaluate. How can we spread out the needs of everybody and how do we meet those needs? Everybody that, all the stakeholders have different requirements, but it all boils down to the need to be outside. The need to be outside in a safe environment and the need to be outside in an environment that is welcoming. And it doesn't matter what organization it is. That's what everybody at the end of the day wants from their parks and rec system. We want to be outside, we want to be able to use our space in a feasible manner. So as the park system, as the commissioners, I think we need to look at, how do we accommodate everybody? So that everybody's need, needs are met without overdoing one side or the other. And I think a lot of the groups have a lot of requirements. They have needs, they have different, you know. Times of day where they're going to want to use the fields, but at the end of the day, we have a finite space and we have finite resources. And it's our job to weigh those resources against the needs of the community. And I think when we look at. Everybody's needs and weigh them all out, that is the balance we need to strike. Thank you.
Thank you, Ramit.
Dinesh?
Yeah, thanks, Shrither. Um, you know, I, I think, uh, it's always important. Um, as, as, you know, as a commissioner to listen to your constituents and your stakeholders. Um, I mean, they're, they're basically, I mean, they are the foundation of our community and. And what we need to do is really look at, you know, the end user and see what is it that they want. Um, it's important to be able to touch really on, you know, in, in our city, I think I mentioned before, you know, we were, we have a very multi-generational. Type of demographics here and, and, you know, and from various cultures too. So. Need to look and see how can we support and promote that and really make sure everyone feels included. Um, I, I like how, you know, we, we've done certain things like expanded, like someone mentioned cricket. I mean, you know, I remember when I was growing up here and, and, you know. Moved during seventy-nine, there wasn't, cricket wasn't here and now we have that and it's become such a huge, uh, you know, a popular sport here in the city. Um, now, you know, I was reading about, on, 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 look at the Arts Committee and they have the Social Justice Initiative. Uh, uh, initiative that they're, that's, uh, going on and I think that, that's great. And, and, you know, and even the art around the city and how we're trying to support that. I think these are things of, you know, folks have various interests. And they come forward to the, you know, to the commission here and, and we try to find a way to, to really include them. And I think that's really important because, you know, it, it, it really shows that we're really listening and we care about really growing. And you look at other cities, I mean, who has like, you know, story time in the park, you know, that's, that's, that's pretty cool, you know, to have that. Where your kids can go and, and do something like that. Or, you know, these community gardens that we have, you know, one at, you know, Pro Canyon or down in Alcosta. So I think, you know, what it's really important, you know, I feel is that we, we listen to our stakeholders, you know, and we engage in them, whether, you know. The young kids, the school age kids, the teenagers, adults, uh, seniors, you know, people with disabilities and it's really paramount that we, we, uh. Follow through with that and I think, you know, I mean, I feel that we're doing a great job and I, I'd like to continue, uh, down that path.
Thank you, Dinesh.
Partha?
Thanks, Shri for the question. So as, um, as I look at, I'm looking at the, uh, PCS departments of facilities and services. I can think about it in three different stakeholders who are using these facilities. One is parks, parks, and that could be included if we want to stretch it to the facilities, trails on that. Uh, as for the master plan, we have sixty-five parks, fifty-seven of them regular parks and one eleven facility, specialty parks. Um, and overall, if we look at them, they, I mean, we use them every day, so they are awesome. They're really awesome. This is one of the top of the line on that. So I really, uh, thank to the PCS department. Uh, and staff as well as commission and the council members to maintain that way. Uh, but there are also some improvements as well as, again, the master plan talks about few of the, I didn't know if a few of the parks that need some improvement, something, so we need to do that. When I talk to the community members, because, um, I do talk to them, I do a lot of events and stuff like that. Uh, there is a task for a dog park or some sort of dog walking thing. We do have, but probably there are some other people on that. Other things I heard about the lighted tennis schools, um, that is something that is we've been hearing over and over again. Um, and, and I think somebody talked about gymnasium, outside gymnasium as well. So those are the things that I'm hearing, hearing as well. And the, the, while we are doing that, we do maintain the, uh, maintain the partners. Uh, we have different partners. Like San Ramon Unified School Districts and others. Uh, we do have community services, uh, like library services, like story works, senior services. Uh, teen councils supports them, helps them a lot and then art convention. The third one is field users, field users are the. Uh, like, you know, people who are using it like basketball, San Ramon Little League, uh, soccer is a San Ramon Soccer League. Uh, we do have cricket associations, we do have San Ramon Aqua Bears and Lacoste, all those groups. They support, help the kids. So senior and kids during this tough time, they're going through a lot of stress. So I think we can help them through providing this. So I'm very happy that PCS department is supporting that and doing that. And also businesses also, we can also help them. So, you know, so that, that's, that's how I will look at it as a stakeholders. Thank you.
Hi, uh, I see Sabina raised your hand.
Yes, I was gonna say, so we're, everybody's done, right? In this round?
I have, I have.
Sorry.
One more.
Oh, I'm, my apologies. I speak after you then.
Patrick?
Uh, my dad once said, uh, you don't learn very much when you're, when you're talking. So I think first step is basically to listen. Uh, what the community needs. Uh, you know, that's the most important thing. Find out what those needs are. Uh, you know, through, uh, online surveys, through the, the council meetings, through the commission meetings. Through, you know, talking to your neighbors, community feedback, talking to the community leaders. Uh, I think that's the first step. I also think that we need to, um, you know, implement technology more and embrace it. And I think we've done a really good job with that and I'll give. Uh, just two quick examples, the, uh, courts, mobile application through the tennis courts for time. I think that's great. We have two former students of. Uh, San Ramon doing that. So if we could implement more engagement with the, uh, with our students. That'd be great to come up with some of these solutions in the future. The, uh, San Ramon Hiking Trail App is a great app. Uh, and that's something too that I think we can expand on that. I know we have the, um, uh, the public has wanted, uh, more. More of a walking district to tie in with the city center. So I think expanding, kind of creating, developing and growing a, uh. You know, a walking, a walking district. I think that'll be very beneficial, uh, for, for everyone. I think variety, diversity and inclusion. I know those are, I think are the most important things fitting the community needs. For example, people have mentioned, you know. Came out, we needed, City of San Ramon needed more, uh, cricket, cricket field. So more cricket fields were put in. Uh, I also think, uh, ping pong and badminton, uh, expanding and increasing that would be, uh, very beneficial. So, uh, just so many things, uh, completing the, uh, crossing for Iron Horse Trail. Again, what other people have said, more shade and benches there, expanding, widening the gaps. So there's so many different things to do, but of our fifty-eight parks are all the crown jewels and I definitely think there's room for development. Uh, on the west side, we're, we're pretty full on the east side. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Sabina, you had a question before we go to Mark?
I had a recommendation that we take a five-minute break, give everybody five minutes to kind of go off screen.
Okay.
Drink water.
I was gonna take it after, but go ahead. Uh, we're gonna take, if that's okay, let's take a five-minute break. Uh, everybody calm down. When we come back, Councilmember Armstrong, we'll start with your questions and then Vice Mayor Perkins. So we be back in five.
Mayor, you went for a hike? And you're on mute.
That's probably the best part. At this part in the race, you feel like trash. Four hours after the race, you're playing for the next year. Just absolute stupidity. Yeah, it only cost me two hips. All right, we're, here, more official. Actually, what got me thinking about, somebody said the dog park. I dedicated that when I was mayor. Oh, oh, which one? The one that's on Del Mar, the first one. I think it was January or February, two thousand and one. Oh, yeah, we, uh, we jumped on the dog park thing pretty quick, but the stuff we put in there was tearing up their paws. Uh, it ended up being like the second busiest park in the city in no time. It became very, very popular. It's still debated.
Forget when there was a controversy in Danville about adding a new park and whether they were gonna cut an old park in half. And make a small dog and large dog. And just about that time, a dog died at the park. They were both going after. Two dogs went after a frisbee and the big dog smacked the little dog, little dog died and, oh, no.
I'm not saying a word. I know who it was. Then we had the issue about the little dog park. I, the amazing thing to me is that everybody thinks this is non-controversial. This was, uh, you know, Herm Whelms vote that got it. He was the third vote. It was three to two. Same thing with the, the skateboard park. Try and get rid of that now. Be easier to get rid of a basketball court than a. Skating park. Anyway, we about ready to come back?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, what, why not cat parks? Like, there's discrimination going on there.
Great idea, cat park.
It's not a great idea and it was not a great idea the first fifteen times it was suggested. A cat park. I dare you to try and get one to go to a cat park. I mean, the minute anybody went in there, the darn things would leave. Uh, anyway, uh. There's one on the Iron Horse Trail that comes up. It's the, anyway, Christina, are we back?
Uh, we are. Uh, so we'll start with Councilmember Armstrong will be asking the fourth question.
You've got the floor and then after you're through, just keep going right through. We'll keep everybody moving.
All right, sounds good. Here's my, uh, my question for the first applicant. What's a growing trend in our community you would like the Parks and Community Services Commission to consider during your term as a commissioner?
The first candidate is Patrick.
I'll be the guinea pig on this one. Um, that's a good one. Great question. Thank you so much for the question. I think there's, there's a lot of, uh, you know, there's, there's so many different things. I think one. Um, well, we kind of, the dog parks, I know there's a, with the pandemic going on, unprecedented times. More people are, you know, wanting more dog parks for their dogs, more people are wanting, um, fencing in some. So I think that is a, you know, somewhat of a, a, a controversial issue. I think that needs to be studied more. Um, but I think, you know, that would definitely be something to, uh, look into. I also think another trend. Since I still have another minute and seventeen seconds left would be, um, uh, addressing, again, looking into more. Uh, if, if it determined that we need this, then more, uh, ping pong, adding ping pong, uh, tables, uh, somewhere. As well as, uh, badminton, uh, to address the, um, growing population boom. As well as, uh, inclusiveness and culture diverse of, um, since we have a, 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 a bigger Asian population now. So I think those, those things would be very big as well as, um, I know as mentioned before, but floodlights or, um. Lights for the basketball courts at night and as well as tennis courts and, um, possibly looking into more tennis courts. Um, if it, you know, was fiscally responsible, because I know, uh, a lot of people are always wanting to play tennis in San Ramon. Um, myself included and they are a lot of times. myself included, and they are, a lot of times it's hard to get a tennis court. So hopefully the mobile courts application, I think it'll alleviate some of that. But, so those are sort of the trends that I think I would look into. If I'm lucky enough and fortunate enough to be chosen to be on the commission. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
David.
All right, David, you need me to repeat the question?
I'm good, Mark. Thank you for the question. So for me, I think the growing trend that I want to see more of is, I want us to reach out more to the community. We have so many talented people in our community. So I'm thinking of like the Scarecrow Project where it, we asked the community to build their own scarecrows and we put them in Central Park. That was just an amazing thing. And we saw all these different kind of scarecrows from different cultures. I'm thinking of the Social Justice Collective, which my committee approved and I serve as a liaison on the committee to that. That's going to be an amazing thing where we're bringing, you know, people from different cultures to design art. It'll be on the, on, on the skate park. We're working with a number of nonprofits on that. You know, this isn't an example of like the community creating art, but like the story walk. That, that's a great thing. I brought a friend out here last week and we were just walking around and she was just enthralled that we had this like story walk that you could just see. So I, what I would like to see, once the world normalizes, which is hopefully sooner than later, I want us to do more community events. I think for Diwali, you know, in November, there should always be something in the park where we ask people to create something or there's some kind of project with the Lunar New Year. There should always be something like that. And again, once the world, world normalizes and we can all be closer than six feet apart, whenever that is, I really think, you know, we have a great infrastructure, we have great parks, but what we need to do is utilize them and use it as a gathering place for a community to bring them together. Like, let's have fun. So that's my answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. All right. Who's next?
Richard.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay.
I know Srihar is happy with all the cricket court comments tonight. And I've also, you know, I've talked to other people about, in fact, the new council member of Danville who said pickleball very, very big over there. So I'm imagining that trend will also come over here. But that's something that we want to get the feedback from our, from our residents. One great thing about our community is all age groups really have something to say. And I know we have that new Social Justice Collective group that has come up with an idea for a an art project near the city hall. And that is in line with social justice. A number of us contributed or took part in the, in the Black Lives Matter March. And that was something that I think there were a lot of ideas that people wanted to express because of what was happening last year. And something like the art project gives people in that group an opportunity to express themselves. So it's not just maybe the older folks, but maybe, you know, what are the younger people thinking? So I like that. I also would like to see maybe a cuisine night in San Ramon, because we have so many cultural groups. I would love to try, you know, new food. I tend to stick with the old tried and true. But let's have an event where everybody brings, you know, different types of food that represent the entire city of San Ramon. So I think those are the things that we want to do to bring this community together, especially after COVID. I think people are shut in and they're a little exasperated and they want to get out. And hopefully at one point, we'll be able to hug each other again and, and get out and appreciate the beautiful community we live in. So those are some of the ideas I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Christina?
Heidi.
All right, Heidi, you need me to repeat the question for you?
No, thank you. I think that is a fantastic question. And I, I mentioned connection earlier and how important it is to build further, build and strengthen community connection, traditions, et cetera. I think COVID has drawn into sharp relief the need for people to connect, to build inclusivity across our community. And I see this as a real opportunity. I, as I mentioned before, I think we've had pockets, people can cross pockets in their lives. But I think now we are seeing a desire and a need to be part of something more, to have more connection. In the Bay Area, technology is such a big focus for us. And we spend a lot of time on it. But I think this time is starting to show how much we need to get outside and be together. And I think the Parks and Rec Department can really lead the charge. The city can lead the charge in creating that welcome inclusivity, that connection that people need. There are so many great trends out there. I'm very excited about the things. We've been talking about pickleball and ping pong and others, getting the teenagers out there. The, you know, the chess boards out where the older folks and the younger folks are coming together. One thing I do think we need to focus on is year round access. Lighted fields, lighted tennis courts and all weather year round fields. I want to provide opportunities year round from people of all ages, of all cultures, of all interests to get out and be part of the community and participate in a lot of different ways. And I think that's, to me, it isn't one sport or one activity. I think it's inclusiveness and connection. And I think we are at a, a precipice. We're at a, at a point in time where we can make a real difference in building connection through contact, not just technology. The technology should have a role.
Okay, thank you.
Eva?
Hi, Eva. I can repeat the question if you like.
If you don't mind, just want to make sure.
Sure. What is the growing trend in our community that you would like the Parks and Community Services Commission to consider during your term as a commissioner?
Thank you. Yes, well, there's, one of the trends is that we do have an aging population. And, you know, one thing we do know is that our, our folks, our community, they want to get out and they want to be in with nature. And something that is near and dear to my heart is really botanical gardens, right? I don't think we have enough flowers in San Ramon. And I would love to see a botanical garden where people of all ages can roam through it in a meandering way. It's well thought out, well designed. It could be educational. It could be part of environmentally sound. So it's, it's, you know, California native plants and with little signs so the kids can come at their field trips. The older community can enjoy their walks and they're staying healthy. They're getting outdoors. So, so that is one. And the other one that comes to mind is with COVID, people are zooming more, working from home more. And I think what we can do is attract some tech companies actually to come to San Ramon and have their businesses here. A lot of larger companies out in expensive areas in San Francisco or Silicon Valley are closing because they realize they're getting the performance from their, their folks. And they, you know, we, we can attract those. We can attract some of those businesses here. So I do think that that is something to consider. I, I would love to see a bocce ball court. Camp Utabachi just closed. So let's fill that gap and bring some bocce ball back.
Thank you.
Steve?
All right, Steve, you need me to repeat?
Councilmember Armstrong, I have it. Thank you so much for the question. I appreciate it. So if we sit back and look at trends, I think one trend we need to think about is, is really customer service or how do we over, over communicate with our, with our, with our citizens of the park? And what I mean by that is how do we create, for me, how do you create an app? Or an app, we have lots of app right now. I think someone mentioned we have tennis app, but we need a one stop app for someone, if they're also, they're going to go play tennis or if they're going to see if the fields are rented. We need a convenience, a convenient place for people to go to know, hey, is this tennis court open? Is this field open? Is it reserved by somebody? As we look at trends, the trend of information, convenience and on timely information is helpful for people to get on a field. So I think that's a major need. So we over, I said earlier, but how do we ever serve our citizens where we're a destination of parks? As we look at other trends, we talk about during COVID, in the master plan, we talk about interconnectivity, right? Interconnectivity with our parks. I think it's massively important even now during, as we've been through the pandemic. We've seen a lot more of our, our multi-generational houses walk around parks. How do we provide more walking trails with more information within the, in the master plan? They talk a lot about signage. And I think there's a need for more signage on our trails, more directions, especially as we're dealing with multi-generational families. And so how do we, and also how do we provide shade? Because I think we'll see more people out about using our, our open spaces and also our parks. I could go on a couple of them, but the other ones that I would look at is, how do we look at our programs and say, we have very diverse, diverse communities. So good examples, how do we offer like a mahjong where people are playing mahjong and educate our community about that great game? To get more people playing it. So we're more connected as a community because we understand the games that people offer. We talked earlier about cricket, how we educate people about cricket, or different unique programs that this diverse community can, can offer. And then, and that's it. So thank you so much, Councilmember Armstrong, for the question. Appreciate it.
Kumar?
Hey, Kumar.
Yes, hi. I'm good, Councilmember Armstrong. It is a great question. What is the growing is always you need to look at it. It is how community is growing and how we are really as a commissioner, how we are envisoning and we prefer to meet their needs, the community. A couple of things I want to point out, even I can take that Iron Horse Trail, even though it's a crowded, even, and I make even the morning if you look at it when I go running, walkers, runner and bikers, if you look at it, it's, I, what I think is even the growing to more, we should avoid some accident and split these bikers, separate and walkers, other side, that is a safe to do that. If it is expansion, that should be one of the things is I really seriously looking for a safe zone. And another area is always you need to listen to the resident needs is like Bazi Ball. That is, I really like that one. And the community needs is a multiple demographics and diversity, people needs and the interest is different for all ages, like younger kids to seniors. How do you get their needs? Because even you can build everything with their, they are not really enjoying. Then you spend money and time that's not going to be satisfied. But it's, it's like we, I looked at the master plan. It's a great plan to implement. But again, always there is a plan we come up with. We have to continually evaluate and we see that whether the need is satisfied with talk to the residents in terms of they have a community event. Just to go there as a commissioner, at least to interact with the people, hey, are you enjoying the park? Is there any need, do you have more lights? Because I was talking to people, there is more light will be there. It is, they can have more time to enjoy. These kind of things, continue to look at it and evaluate as a commissioner. I want really connect residents to get the feedback and improve. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, thank you, Kumar.
Yeah.
Sean?
Yeah, thank you. So I think it's clear, you know, everyone has a background that would fill this position well. Everyone's got good ideas, but at the end of the day, it's a new position for whoever takes the role. So aside from those proper channels of, you know, stakeholder input and priorities and financing, really building on some of the things we already have and understanding those metrics of things people really enjoy. People use, you know, the All Trails app, the Outer Spatial app is huge. I had both. I use both, building on that and creating a, a space where you can do the scheduling online and see what is available at your fingertips is huge, given today's climate. If you've been up to Memorial Park, that mountain biking course is always full. You know, kids from my school are always over there utilizing that. Is there room for, for open space to expand on something like that? And, and connect that with our Outer Spatial and show, you know, spots where they can get out and ride a little more. But, you know, aside from, from the younger kind of active lifestyles, there's also, you know, the need for, for shaded areas and shaded structures for both our younger and our, our senior populations. You drive by from June to October now and it's too hot to be out. You know, is there room for us to, to provide a little more space or water features to get people using those throughout the, the warm weather? Simple things like, you know, repurposing those picnic tables to, to allow for, for ping pong, that multi-use. That's an easy, you know, cost effective way to, to get people out there. You know, outdoor rinks, like the one they have down the road in Pleasanton is, is packed. Sundown, the sunrise, the sun, sun up with, you know, people skating, playing hockey, footsaw, the box, the cross. There's so many avenues and, and, and really understanding where we can grow is, is huge. What are the P E teachers teaching? You know, as a teacher, whatever I teach, the next week, kids are, are coming to school excited about it and telling me the scores. So there, there's lots of rooms there, lots of rooms for growth.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
Rodney?
Okay, so having spent 18 years in Georgia, one of the things that was very much impressed upon me there was the need for social grace. And now that I've been back here, one of the things that I see with our teen population is we have incredibly smart kids. But many of those kids are so driven to succeed and they're so hyper focused on academics that they are losing sight of what it means to be a good citizen. So I would love to see some classes or some program through the rec department that focuses on social citizenship and what it means to be a good citizen and a good neighbor. You know, how do we reach out to each other? How do we communicate not through debates or through speeches? But how do we socially communicate with each other? I think that is an incredibly important skill that is becoming more and more rare as our children communicate via email and on text messages. They need to learn how to communicate in person. Second, I would love to see more programs relating to adults. Over the summer, when I was at soccer practices for my kids, there were at least four different groups of adults who would come and just play soccer amongst themselves. There was a group of Japanese adults. There was a group of Latino men. There was a group of, I believe they were Persian men. And then there was this giant catch-all group of about 50 or 60 people who were just playing. I would love to see something where we put all those people together and they were able to enjoy their sports as a part of a community, not in discreet organizations. Last, for our senior citizens, we have a huge immigrant population and a lot of them are seniors. And I would love to see them incorporated into our existing senior programs where we celebrate our diversity and we share it with each other. That, that's what I would love to see if I was elected or I was nominated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rodney.
Dinesh?
Yeah, um, thanks, Councilmember Armstrong for this, for the, for the question. You know, I, the summer, you know, when I was campaigning, I, I actually asked this question to a lot of folks and seeing, what is it that, you know, folks really want and what are they looking for? And what is sort of the trends in the community? What is the feedback before getting, you know, kind of giving me? And, and one thing that I, I kind of heard that resonated over and over again, it was, was the whole thing about parks and trying to make a more multi, I mean, more make it functional for all ages. You know, we, again, mentioned before, we have these multi-generational families and, and things where there's some type of good walking paths and maybe some type of exercise stations and workout stations that people can use as they're going through there. That's easy for you, for folks to use for all ages. And again, going back to that, what I mentioned earlier is promoting the health and wellness. I think that's really a way we can bring our, you know, selves together. And even, you know, I know we're one of the safest cities here in, in California, but you know, that can kind of push us towards being one of the healthiest cities, you know, as well in California. So I think that's one thing I, I heard, you know, and, and with these different, you know, parks, you know, there's, there's an ability to make it more functional. It's nice. I mean, you know, there's, at Ramona, you, you have these nice bocce ball facilities there or, you know, and courts. And you could go and, you know, for folks for all ages or, you know, Six Pillars, you can go look at a, you know, there's like chess type. you know, there's like chess type of tables available and, and things like that. And if we could do more of those in other areas, I think that would be very important. Um, and I think that's sort of what I've been hearing. Also, um, some of the parks are more mature, you know, more mature, they're older. Uh, like you look at like Athens down, some of those parks, they have more mature trees. So when you sit around in a picnic table there, you have shade. Other parks you don't. And so shade structures have been a thing where I've seen too, that people have really mentioned, uh, to me as well. And, and now with COVID, a lot of folks are walking out and, um, going on trails. And we've been really hitting the trails a lot more. And I think it's important for, um, I see some signage, but it'd probably be good if we could, you know, in, um, what I've heard too, from others is it'd be nice to have a little more signage to kind of give a little more details about the trails and, and such, you know, throughout. Because we have such, so many beautiful trails here in, in San Ramon. And so those are a few things. And a couple of other things that I've heard too is about, we're talking about the apps, but I think one of the other thing too, that I, I've heard is that if there's a problem, let's say when you're at a park or some issue, we kind of need to have an app that you could just put something in quickly and send it off to the city. And, you know, say, hey, this is an issue that we've seen and, and people could, uh, really address that. But, um, you know, I'd also be, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about what was going around. I think another thing, um, that's a big trend is just the whole social justice initiative. And I, I mean, I'm, I'm quite amazed to see what the arts committee is doing. And I think if we keep promoting stuff like that, I, I,
I think we, we got your two minutes already.
Sorry, thank you.
Unless I missed the clock countdown.
Sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Partha.
Thank you, Mark, for the question. I think this is a great questions and it's daily thing, uh, let me think, uh, think through what I discussed with my community and other members. So as I think it, think it more, I think there are very high level, there are three things that I think of. One is an age-based need and asks. Um, the other, uh, is a cultural and family-related asks. And the third one is definitely very, uh, relevant right now with the social justice and diversity because of the growing populations on that. So one is the age. So age-wise, we have already known that, uh, and the master plan talks about it, that San Ramon is a aging populations and growing population, but aging population. So we need to think about how do we support the senior citizens with their needs like a trail? We, one of the, one of the items that, uh, Master Plan talks about, the Iron Horse Trail should have the benches and the sheds. That's a good initiative, something like that. And also add more senior programs. So we need to think about it, all the other things on that. So there is a need for that as well. For the, for the age, younger age, we can have lighted tennis court, bocce ball court, cricket pitches. We all talked about that. So there are, there are a lot of requirements and ask for that. And, and the other parts, we can talk about cultural diversity programs. We do have few things like culture in the community and all those programs we have. Social justice, we just in the, from our, uh, art advisory, we just approved that one and it's going to the council. Uh, on that, uh, the social justice related programs, uh, we can think about diversified programs like, you know, um, Asian musical nights in city. So that can attract people from not only from the tri-valley areas, but the outsides people on that something that unique in the Bay area, something like that. And it can be any language. It can be multicultural, multi-musical nights or something like that. And also, uh, you know, we can have, we can promote something like Agamoni Durga Puja that we do Diwali and other things on that. So there are a lot of things that we can think of and definitely two minutes is not enough to completely discuss that, but definitely that's what I can think of. Thank you.
Thank you, Parth. Christina.
That was the last candidate for question number four.
Good. Vice Mayor Perkins, you're going to bring us home. Your question is, uh, for each of the candidates and then we'll caucus on what we're going to do. So Vice Mayor Perkins, you have the floor. Ask your question.
Mine's two parts. One's very short. The first part is, uh, have you read the Parks Trails Open Space and Recreation Master Plan? Yes or no? The second one is, what would be your first priority to accomplish during your first year on the commission?
So the first candidate is Partha.
So I'll repeat it. Have you read the Parks and Community Services Parks Trails Open Space and Recreation Master Plan? Yes or no? How will you implement, um, how do you expect to implement your top priority during the first year?
Um, back to back, lucky me. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Perkins. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So yes, I did, I did thoroughly read that because that was, I was part of the focus, two of the focus groups. And also the, one of the data collection point was our Agamoni Durga Puja for this. So I've been involved almost two years on that one, although I was not part of PCS Commission, but I was really involved. So yes, I have read through it, um, a lot, gave feedbacks on that. So yes, so one of the things, again, within two minutes, if I want to just pick one of them. So there are 10 proposals that were given into the part things and all are very, very important. And of course, we had to go through the funding, we had the proposals and stuff like that. So if you ask me to propose, just pick one, I would say, uh, with the aging populations, with the things we, one thing we need to, well, really if we have to pick it is a enhancement of the Iron Horse Trail, providing shading, shades and benches along the way, as well as, uh, Bollinger Canyon overpass. Because there are a few things. Number one, it connects through all the, uh, it, it helps all the master plan, uh, guiding principles like interconnections, inclusiveness, as well as balances quality. And also with the overpass, we will reduce lot of our carbon footprint into that intersection, Bollinger intersections. So that is definitely something that we think of. As well as on that, if we improve the quality of the Iron Horse Trail with a lot of families staying at home right now and trying to hit the, uh, trail with the family, with the aging populations. It's a very, very, uh, good return on investment if we do that because people want to go out now, want to spend time there. And there's a healthy lifestyle on that one. With the pandemic thing, with people are at home. I think this is something that we should, as a city, should look into very seriously going forward. Thank you.
Patrick.
Yes, I have, uh, thank you for the question. Um, I have, uh, read the plan and, um, I think that, uh, one thing that is very important, uh, again, is to, uh, I agree with Parton that, uh, expand the shade there on the Iron Horse Trail. I think that's very important. Uh, complete the crossing there. Uh, and I also think that we need to, um, you know, the, there's just so many different things, but I think that's the first place to, uh, a good place to start. I also wanted to just, uh, uh, address, uh, that I think we should also, um, you know, one of the goals should be to, um, get to that level of incidence, uh, along the way at 6.5% of our goal, hopefully before the 2035 of the general plan. And I, um, think that the, uh, the master plan, one of the, um, big things is just, again, the shade, more benches, we have a elderly population and I think addressing that is, uh, very important. There's so many facets, uh, to maintaining and preserving, uh, the, our parks and our community service. And, um, just in conclusion, I, I think my experience working, um, with various cities, including San Ramon over the last, uh, 20 years, I think that is a, a unique perspective. Um, and I feel like there's so much to be done for the city, uh, if I'm fortunately selected. And, uh, I want to thank everybody for their time and, um, I hope, uh, that, um, uh, yeah, there's just so much to be done. So I hope I'm selected and thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
David.
Hey there.
You need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I'm good, Scott. So, uh, thank you, Scott, for the question. I want to thank the city council, uh, for doing this tonight. And I also want to thank all my fellow interviewees and I, I hope I didn't steal too many of your points, uh, during this. So, um, as I look at the, so your, the answer is yes, I have looked through the master plan and there are four goals under that. And for me, the goal that I want to focus on is inclusivity. Now, what does that mean? That means trying to serve all the community. That can mean, you know, our community is becoming much more diverse racially, but we also have aging seniors. You know, we have new people who are moving into the community who, you know, for jobs and things like that. So you need to make sure that it reflects that. So, you know, what I've learned from my committee work is that a lot of the work you do is not in, you know, the meetings. It's outside of the meetings. It's engaging with folks. It's, you know, reading through, it's asking questions. So in order to accomplish that, I think you need to encourage city staff, you know, to work with the community. The community is going to come up with way better ideas than I ever would. Uh, so it's important to put them in touch with the city to see how that can be implemented. And I think, you know, we, things that we need to do, we need to make sure that the trails are usable by seniors. We need to make sure that, uh, we're using tech better. You know, we have all this technology now, but it seems like we're more misinformed than ever. So I think we need to really figure out how we just inform our community better. You know, I'll give an example. We have a poet laureate in San Ramon. I don't know how many people know that, but we just approved a project. Uh, and my first comment was, I'm glad we're doing something because I don't think a lot of people know that we have a poet laureate. So, you know, for me, the thing is, how do we, you know, build inclusiveness? How do we communicate? How do we, you know, grow as a community? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Richard.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the question, Scott. I think I'm going to look at the level of service, uh, because I think that's what. The first part was, have you read the? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I, I did read it. Thank you. And I, I think what we need to do is look at where the shortages are because we've done a lot of great things. But we still need to see where we can find more open space. I talked about it earlier about maybe having more parks on the, uh, on the west side of town. But our goal was level of service, I think 6.5 acres per 1,000 residents. And we're not at that. I think we're at 4.5. I don't know if that goal will change, but that's what it is now. So I think we need to look around, anticipate our growing population and determine where those new parks need to be placed. I think we also need to look at, as we do, we look at our infrastructure. And we have been modernizing and up, uh, updating our, uh, our various community centers. And we've made a decision to, in some cases, do more, you know, focus on one particular community center and do more work to upgrade those service, those, uh, facilities. Sometimes we change the purpose somewhat. We move rooms around. So that is something based on the need of the community that I think we need to continue to do. So basically we look at where the greatest need is and we figure out, do we have the funds to, uh, do what we want to do? Sometimes we get, uh, help from other, uh, sources like the, uh, the Krog Canyon Gardens. We had a, a group that wanted to work on that as well. So we need to continue to look for other friends that will help us do what we need to do. Thank you.
Heidi.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor Perkins, I have read the study and I want to take a, just a brief opportunity to, um, share my appreciation. The staff, the community stakeholders, the commissioners and all the folks involved did a tremendous job. It is very, very well laid out. And as San Ramon resident, I'm extremely proud of the work and of the plan. And I would be very excited to have an opportunity to help implement it. Choosing just one thing? Unfair question, but I get it. I think realistically, um, we will have to focus on multiple things at once with, you know, some things running in parallel because they can be done and they're early wins. And where we can do that, we should. What we need to do, of course, is to some degree prioritize, but be nimble and flexible in how we do that. We don't need to choose one as the exclusion of others as a general matter, but we need to prioritize them in terms of funding, um, staff power feasibility. The one thing that comes to mind, I'm going to say accessibility. I want our parks to be accessible. We have, you know, special needs population. We have seniors. We certainly have a lot of young kids and we have teenagers. We also have an extremely diverse population. I'm extremely fortunate to have the opportunity to raise my kids in the Dordie Valley where we do have a tremendous diversity of have the opportunity to organize cultural festivals, international festivals where, Richard, we actually do provide samples of all the food, sometimes 20 countries or cultures. I think those things, we need to embrace that. And, and in, when I use the word accessibility, I want to embrace all of those cultures. So I would say as a fundamental matter accessibility, that incorporates making the trails, the surfaces more usable for different folks. Um, that includes shade structure, something I did a big fundraising initiative with at the elementary school where we had none. And I've seen that firsthand and it is a deterrent, not just for the seniors, but for my family to get out. Sorry, I see that I'm time is up. Thank you.
I'm about ready to cut you off if he doesn't. I, thank, thank you very much. Heidi.
Eva.
Hi, yes, um, it is hard to pick one. I, you know, I have two that I would choose. And one is, oh, yes, I did read the master plan. But two, one would be the overhead, um, trail, the, the overhead crossing for the Iron Horse Trail. The second one would be, um, the commune, the Krog Canyon Garden. So I'm going to focus on the gardens. That is one, the only park that was rated as in poor condition in San Ramon. And I would consider that a priority. And I know we have to protect and preserve. We can preserve what we want to preserve there and, um, look at what we want to change there. But I'm going to go back to my comment earlier. We need more flowers in, in San Ramon. I would love to be part of that, um, decision-making process to make it a botanical garden. And again, this addresses all of our demographics in, in San Ramon at, of all ages. We would be giving back to nature. We could be mindful of the materials we use that are all natural and, um, making sure that it's, um, you know, drought resistant and it conserves, uh, so it doesn't use a lot of water. The other thing, you know, we just need to plant, um, some beautiful flowers that attract the birds and the bees and give back to our bee population which is suffering and making sure that we don't use any pesticides. And we're just mindful how we design it and, um, respecting our environment and respecting nature and bringing some of that back. And again, another thing that our citizens, um, really like to do besides walking is photography. So this is a place where they can go and take photos of, of themselves in the garden or of the flowers themselves. So, uh, and it's also educational for the school kids.
Thank you.
Steve.
Hey, first of all, um, I want to thank the council, uh, the mayor and also, um, Christina and timekeeper tonight. Yes, I've read the master plan and I think it's very well done. And, um, I really like the, the four strategies along with the clear and concise of what you want to get done. Do, do I have priorities I want to get done? Absolutely. But I think the first part is when I get on the committee, we have worked some really smart people in the Parks and Parks Committee. My idea is I first need to seek and understand what their priorities are because I have to work with a committee, even though I'm very passionate about idea. I want to make sure that I understand what the priorities are with the commission, make sure I'm aligned to them. Then if I, and then work with staff, if I have another priority or my committee that I'm with to say, hey, what about, like, I'm very passionate about conservation, connection to nature. How do we, you know, how do we incorporate that into the priorities? If it's not into priorities, then I work with the committee to get into the priorities. So if you said to me, Steve, you didn't have to work through the committee to pick one, my big thing is I love the conservation and connection to nature. I think like, uh, we really look at Krog Canyon Gardens, we've done a nice job on the Parks Mission, so a nice job in creating plan. The council's got behind it, but how do we continue to get the city involved? Like, a lot of people looking to do Eagle Scout projects. How do we, you know, help them get them more involved in nature? How do we educate people on nature? How do we educate people on taking care of our parks? Um, and then I like how do we, how we make sure that we preserve the future of those type of environments for the next generation. And I think that strategy really resonates to me. So for me, I'd be very passionate about taking some of our natural spaces and get more of the community involved. I mentioned earlier about scouting, uh, how do we work with the San Ramon School District to take advantage of some of the resources we have to educate, um, our next generation. So lastly, thank you so much for your time tonight. I really, really appreciate it. And, um, this is, and good luck to everybody who's interviewing, but this is really great. I really appreciate your time. Thanks.
Kumar.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Scott. Um, I did read that, uh, master plan. Uh, thank you for that, but I, as I said before, kudos to all the stakeholder who are involved that are putting together, it is a very, uh, impressive. Um, so the top 10 opportunities, uh, I'm really impressed. Uh, it is, uh, I think is if you ask me that a priority, but there are things, I know it's overpass is, uh, I would say it's a good and another safe seating for the I know style that is important because there is very crowded area. There are, uh, the connecting, uh, uh, interconnecting, uh, trials, that is another thing is I can say. But again, everything is, it's a really very, uh, clearly mentioned. And I would think adding two more, uh, one is more lights on the park to utilize more, more time for the people. And, uh, another one is I was thinking, how do we, if a park is utilized, the summer time is more people, but how do we really engage them more fall and winter? It's like kids have a summer eating program, can we bring this kind of park utilization program in the, to utilize more? So how, what it takes to recreate a more light or, uh, what, what other thing is more heater or whatever it is? If you want to engage the people in the arc, I mean, through mini fitness. And, uh, another thing is I was impressed with the, our vision, right? Create communities through, uh, people, parks and partnership and program. That is a well, uh, the vision, the, uh, PCS, right? So part of this is I want to making sure bring the mini fitness in the school ground. The kids can also use then, uh, when, when the school is off, then community can utilize. So those things is I'm thinking of bringing it. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Christina and everybody. Thank you so much.
Sean?
Yes, so I've read it, but I think there's an important distinction to be made, uh, between reading it through the lens of a member of the community and, uh, a member of the commission. Uh, so with that, my first priority would be to learn, right? I'm, um, like I said, I'm obviously starting off young here. And I understand that there's time to, to grow into not only this position, but into, you know, the potential for, for future leadership opportunities with the city. Listening to those who have done, done there, been there and done that, uh, you know, they have a lot to say. Even those like I've, I've talked about earlier, those that maybe I don't share the same opinion with, they, they still have wisdom to share. And from that, I can always take something away from it and, uh, continue to, to grow and build my understanding of, of not only the, you know, this position, but the city as a whole and, and continue to serve the community and the, the diverse community that we have the best I can. So, you know, thank you all for having me. I appreciate everyone's time. Good luck to everyone. If you see me at the, uh, at the field, my home base kind of Athens Downs with the dog or with soccer, please come up, say hi. Uh, I've seen some of you before, a few other San Ramon FC people. I look forward to talking or if your kids are at Twin Creeks. Thank you, thank you.
Great.
Robnie?
Hey, so I have read the master plan. Thank you. Um, and I, I think that right now we are in such a state of flux. Um, that master plan was created several years ago and we've updated it, I think in 2017. And we had all these plans, you know, there was the city walk coming, um, you know, San Ramon was moving full steam ahead. And then COVID hit and there's been so much change. The real estate market is on fire right now, people moving in, people moving out. What does that mean for our park system? How does that change our priorities? Right now, everyone is on the trails, everyone is going hiking. Did that happen prior to COVID and will it continue after the pandemic ends? How do we allocate our resources? Do we do it based on the master plan that was created before the pandemic hit or do we need to adjust? And so my personal feeling is that maybe we need to take a step back. Let's look at the master plan and instead of moving forward full steam ahead, we take a step back and maybe focus on infrastructure. What were the things that were being used pre-pandemic and during the pandemic? Do they need updating? Do they need additional resources? You know, and I, I would talk to our Parks and Rec staff and all of our community members, get their input on what were you doing before the pandemic? What are you doing now and what will you continue to do? And then work those needs and desires into the current plan with a focus on infrastructure. Because if you update your infrastructure, you're never going to go wrong. Um, so that's my personal feeling. I just want to thank everybody, um, candidates and the city council members, vice mayor and mayor. Um, I very much enjoyed hearing everybody's lovely thoughts about San Ramon. Like I said, I grew up here and I love it and I'm happy that y'all do too. Thank you.
I've, I gotta interject one thing here. I, I mean, I love it when you put timelines on, we could have said 12 minutes and I swear five of you would have gone over. But if one of you says, if elected, I will not serve, I, I'm, I'm muting all of you. All, and you know where I'm going with this, Steve. It's like, you get to that last question and everybody's like, gee, man. But anyway, uh, do we have more Christina? I'm sorry, I'm, I thought we were down near the end. Uh, I have a couple of comments after the last couple of speakers and, uh, we'll be making the decision tonight. Go ahead.
We have one more candidate and that's Dinesh.
Great. I, I'll try to make sure I say.
That was not time for you, Dinesh.
Hey, you know, you saved.
We went through it.
Hey, um, no, but I, I'll, I'll try to be quick. Uh, I know, uh, last time I went a little over, I was a little passionate about what I was talking about. But yes, the answer, um, Councilman Perkins is that I have read the master plan. And, uh, for me, you know, it's hard again to pick one priority, but, but I would say connectivity and inclusivity is really a big part for me. Um, and I, you know, I think, uh, really supporting the city walk, like, um, and like for the future walking district, that would be something that's important, um, as well as supporting our open space and trails, help with increasing signage, those types of things are, are, are important. And I would love to support that and try to, um, you know, push that forward. Um, we have a great, you know, group of people at the city and, and who's working on this committee and subcommittees. And, you know, would love to be a part of that and, uh, you know, um, I think also that's important, kind of goes along with that is, is, is really the shade structures too. I think that's important because it's part of the trails, you know, when folks are needing to take a break, especially in the summertime or, you know, when it's really hot, um, having areas to take a, a break there or having enough, uh, water fountains throughout, you know, different parts of the trail to really, um, make sure that people stay hydrated. But those, those are some of the things that I, you know, I would, um, I, I would want to do and, and those would be sort of my priorities. Um, but I'd also want to listen to the other members, uh, as well and the committee and, and, and what, and, and our community at large as well. Um, but I want to thank everyone too and all the, uh, candidates as well. Um, it's been, it's been a pleasure listening to all of you and, uh, uh, and thank you to the council, Mayor Hudson and Christina and our timekeeper for, for giving up, giving me this opportunity. And I think I stayed under my time.
You don't have to thank the timekeeper. Is that it Christina? Have we got everybody?
That was last candidate for the last one.
Thank you all of you. I mean, we had a dozen applicants, one person didn't, uh, continue on, they withdrew. So we had 11 people tonight. You were absolutely great on staying on time. I know I joked about it a couple of times, but that's just for levity. Uh, I personally want to thank all of you for making it very difficult on us tonight, uh, to come up with one person. I think a lot of people wish they'd had the four, five or six, whatever we had at the last one, uh, when Steve applied. Uh, but I also want to thank you because you've made it very easy on us at the same time. I don't think we can make a mistake. So if it's okay with the council, I'd like to take another five minute break, come back. We'll let Christina put everybody into attendee and we'll discuss this. The way it'll work is, uh, I'll let you all think about it while you're doing the break, the five council members. Uh, I propose that we do the same thing, pretty much what we did before. The person that started off the questioning will, will go through their reasoning and pick a person, followed by the next, the next, and the next. Uh, if we come up with five different people, we'll have some discussion, uh, take a second vote. There has to be at least three votes of the council to put anyone in this position. I'm looking for nods. I see it from the city clerk. So if you would, again, thank you, we'll be in attendance. We are going to make a selection tonight and that person will be on the Parks and Community Service Commission, with an expert expiration of June 2025. Is that correct? So stay tuned, we'll be back in five.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and, uh, remove you from the panelists, but move you to an attendee if you still wanted to watch the meeting. You don't have to log out, just stay where you are if you want me to move you. You can log out if you want, but you don't have to.
Give a, this is a picture that Heidi should be familiar with. Okay, are we all back? We're official, we're recording?
Of course. Uh, yes.
We're good? Okay. Okay, let me make a suggestion how I, I couldn't like this to go where, like I said before, we've got to get three votes. Uh, and if the people are still listening, I think they probably are, uh, we will be making the decision tonight. We will send out a letter to who gets, uh, the position. I believe the city clerk will get that to you tomorrow. Uh, we're not going to rush through tonight. Uh, I propose that if we, we just start out the same way we did, uh, asking the questions, uh, one, two, three, four, five, let's see how it turns out and, uh, go from there and then reverse it if we go for a second. And Scott, you'll be, uh, leading us off, uh, if that's okay with you guys.
Would you like me to put up the spreadsheet or?
Yes, definitely. Yes. Okay. Okay, and I will start up, I, uh, spent a lot of time on this Sunday looking at it as I told you before, the last time I do it, I put a lot of credence in the written application even more than the, uh, the verbal, so to speak. Had an interesting, uh, hour or so where I was looking and focusing on the, uh, the people from the Arts Advisory Committee. And I kind of had a, well, if I took a group from them, kind of the people that have run, if I had a group from them, uh, Dinesh and Kumar, cause when you're running, you, you end up talking to these people, get to know them a little bit more. I think Steve, uh, was probably the most interesting one because we just interviewed him. Uh, and I'm thinking, you know, what the heck, we put him on a committee, we're going to take him off. But I was pretty impressed with the alternate too, so I'm, I'm not going to hold that against him. Uh, but after I was through looking at this, I, I went through and actually kind of made my selections from the Arts Advisory. Uh, I, I was focused on who it was going to be. And then tonight, he hit the golden words, Aqua Bears. The question that I ask about, uh, the, the swimming, et cetera, goes back to something that we had. This city used to have its gathering place at what was then Royal Vista and the Aqua Bears at the swimming pool there. Uh, and it has a tremendous amount of history. It is the social component that the city grew up with, where people would do the swim meets for their kids, six or seven swim meets. There, I think there was a championship, that night we'd have a, a, you know, what, not a barbecue, you know, potluck. And you really got a chance to talk to people, get to know them. It was a pretty special component in what I call the fabric of San Ramon. And you could take the same lesson, the, the youth that were there to the seniors that would swim, et cetera, all the way up through soccer, did the same thing with adult soccer, uh, kind of got a nice flavor for it. But taking all of the things into consideration, I got it down to three people that I was focusing on. Partha obviously was one of them and the two ladies, Robnie and Heidi. I really was, uh, focusing on the two ladies at the end, uh, Robnie and Heidi. I wish we could pick two, I really do. And I strongly suggest that all of you apply again in June. I know our Parks Commissioner is not going to like that, uh, but this, this is, this is a tough group to pick from. Uh, in the end, uh, I made my selection, we only get to pick one. Is that correct Christina?
Yes.
And I'm going to go with, uh, Robnie. And Sabina will put all the pressure on you.
Oh gosh, this was probably the hardest decision to make. And depending on the question, I literally had people like, you know, who came in one, two, three, four? Cause yeah, it was a cross section. Um, so if I was to pick one person, I would say Heidi.
It's tough.
I, I had like five other people that I would love to see on there. We might get two Heidies. I mean, depends on obviously who gets picked.
Oh, is that my turn?
Yes, it is. I, and you're not going to use that excuse, oh, I can't take my mute off. Oh, is it my turn? Yes, it's your turn, Sridhar.
That sounds good.
Well, you think you're Scott Perkins?
Uh, first of all, wow, it is amazing to see such exceptional candidates applying for this position. Uh, thank you all for applying. Thank you all for applying. I read your applications, you know, it definitely take a lot of time to put together all that information in that application, your time and also today evening joining us and spending your valuable time with us. Thanks a lot. Especially, this is certainly special for me as I consider this as my backfield position. You know, it was a great joy and privilege serving the community for four years as commissioner. And you know, the one thing is the beauty of being a parks commissioner in San Ramon is pretty much everyone in community likes your services. Because what, thanks to our staff for keeping our parks and community services in excellent shape. I'm, I'm, one thing, I'm very happy that pretty much all of you touched base, the importance of continue to build and serve inclusive and diverse community. This is certainly one of the definitely toughest pick, like just now, council member Jafar said, it's going to be tough choice. But being said that, please don't get discouraged. If you're picked today, that's perfect, otherwise there's always the openings keep coming in, the committees, commissions and all that. Okay, so that's, just keep that in mind. And also one thing that I, I think that I owe you to explain my guiding principle for voting the candidate that I'm going to pick today. The first one is someone with a good understanding of our PCS master plan update. So, oh, by the way, Ravi, our master plan update is 2020. I think when you do the Google, I think the link that is taking you to 2017 most probably. But if you go to our website, San Ramon website, it is, master plan is 2020. It's not 2017. And, but I'm very glad that every one of you read that. Then the second one is someone who knows our stakeholders and their requirements. The third point is community volunteer service experience, like participating in community cultural organizations or sports organizations. And definitely additional points for the people, like person who created the organizations. Okay, so and then the fourth point is work with our parks and community services related committee that really shows their interest in doing the warranty of work and commitment. You know, you're spending so much of your personal time for betterment of your community. So that shows your conviction and commitment to the community. And definitely the last, but not least is information on your application as well as the answers that you answered during the interview. So most of you have all this like pretty much, but one thing that exception, like one exception I see is definitely from the candidate Partha, because he's also created an organization. So that makes a difference between all of you great candidates. So that's why I don't want to list like three or four names, just I want to go with one name so that it makes easy. So I'm going with Partha in this case. So I'm very close to Dave's suggestion. Thank you.
I guess I'm up next. So Mayor Hudson, you said the last couple of times we've been through this, it's been pretty, pretty easy because we've all been pretty aligned. I, I think we're starting to head in a different direction. But I want to thank everyone for applying very impressive application packets. I read through them in detail. I love the passion, I always love to kind of hear from, hear the kind of the passion in the voice as people talk through these answers that we are asking them. So everyone is so involved in the community, whether it's with sports or, or, you know, school activities or cultural activities and just you name it, there's just so many the applicants who are involved in so many things, I don't know how you do it all. And, and frankly, it was very informative. You know, some of the questions we asked tonight were, are helping us and helping others who are listening tonight. Perhaps there's other Parks and Community Services Commission members or Parks Community Services staff listening. But I think some of the trends that we heard and some of the needs that we heard about things that we can do to, to improve or to sustain the activities that we have going on in the city, I think it was really important to hear all that tonight. So I, I also was looking at experience when we have several people who have served on some of the committees in the past and, and committees in San Ramon and other places. And I, I was kind of looking at some of the creativity that, that people had and some of the ideas they had. So, but for me, I, I kind of boiled it down to, I do kind of have a rank ordering because I think we're going to get to that point, but I, I picked Dave Owens as, as my first pick.
Okay, well, I guess it's my turn now. So I did kind of a ranking on the answers to the interview questions. I did read all the applications and I really admire the depth of participation throughout the San Ramon community. And I really couldn't base my judgment solely on your participation throughout the community because there's an awful lot of good going on. But I did rank the answers to the questions along what I thought I would answer the questions. So as I was personally thinking about how I would answer Sridhar, Sabina, Mark and Dave, I kind of ranked the applicants the same way. And through all that, my first choice was Heidi. And I know that causes a problem on the commission because then we got a Heidi with a hyphenated name and another Heidi with a hyphenated name. So one of you is going to, no, I don't mean that, I'm kidding. But that is.
Oh, he's not. H K L and H E P, what?
We'll, we'll be fine, we'll figure out something. This is kind of like the cat in the hat with thing one and thing two. Any case, I thought Heidi did, her answers were matched up with my answers the best. A number of you did quite well as, as, I was really impressed. So here we are, now we've got four candidates, one with two votes.
Okay, so we've got it down to four people and I would say at this point, let's have some discussion on it. As long as Sabina and Scott aren't going to change theirs, believe me, what I had, the difference between me and Heidi was so miniscule that I would, I would be that her third vote, unless you guys are all willing to go the opposite way. I was very taken by not only Rob needs answers, but the experience that she had on that Parks and Community Service and it showed in her answers. But that was why I made the choice that I did. And I will be the third vote for Heidi if, unless somebody else can come up with another reason. Mark?
Not another reason, but Heidi was my number two and it was a close number two.
Yeah. So.
Pretty much with me, I was definitely Heidi was my second and Robby was also part of my top five list. So, yeah.
Yeah. I, I think that what we're looking at is, and I'll leave it to a motion. But at this point, this is for comments of people want to make them about the candidates and then do the motion. Or if you wish to do a motion to appoint Heidi to a term to expire in June of 2025, we can listen to that and then do comments, Vice Mayor Perkins.
I'll move to appoint Heidi Alakot Pesik for a term to expire in June 2025 for the Parks and Community Services Commission.
I think second.
Motion Perkins, second. Sabina Zafar, I'm getting closer, aren't I? Yeah. You're never going to let me know.
Can I recruit everybody else for a side committee?
Yeah.
The community service, community committee.
Any further comments? I, I, go ahead, Scott.
I, I just want to commend everyone, what a fabulous group. I, I recognize that four of you are on committees in the city and I commend you for doing that and looking forward to kind of stepping up. There will be opportunities in the future, whether it's the Parks Commission, the Planning Commission and/or other things like that. And, and I just commend all of you for doing what you do in the city, whether it's with sports, it's with PTA, you know, wherever it is, I commend you and I thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the real shame tonight is we can only do one. Go ahead, Sabina.
I was just going to add, like the diversity of ideas we just had tonight and, and everybody was giving their opinion and everything. And it's, you know, all the way from the diversity of the sports and the activities and age groups. Just, I feel really, really, I would say honored as well that we have such amazing candidates in our community that have chosen to apply and spend the, you know, three hours with us this night. So really want to say thank you, I'm not even kidding, like everybody's so good that we could almost form a committee with everybody else's been on this panel. So thank you so much, I really appreciate you interviewing.
Couldn't make a mistake tonight if we tried. Mark, you want to add something in Sridhar before the vote?
Sure, I just echo the same, the previous two council members, a great group tonight. And I certainly hope that we will see some of these names again in, in future applications where Parks and Community Service Commission or other activities, that other vacancies that are coming up before the city. Great job tonight, everyone.
Yes, Sridhar.
So as I mentioned before, like thank you once again and please don't get discouraged. There's always new openings keep coming up and all, every one of you are like exceptional. Believe me, like it's amazing to pick one, almost everybody is like very close to my ranking. So please make sure you continue to participate in community service and I'm, I'm sure I'll see you guys around in the community one of those evenings. Thank you.
And I would just add before we take the vote, that, you know, I always look for the opportunity to bring, you know, the, the kids that grow up, you know, come from this community and then come back at any opportunity I can. You know, so shout out to those of you that applied, keep on applying because you're noticed. Anyway, Christina, would you take the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilmember Burrows?
Yes.
Councilmember Zafar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
And Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And once again, I thank all of you for bearing with my makeshift system here tonight. That's the council and the members who did apply. Our newest member to the Parks and Community Service, congratulations. Heidi Alakot Pesik, I hope I pronounced that right. Whatever you do, don't get stuck up there in the snow because we need to square you in down here. So as soon as you get back, we'll arrange that and the letters will go out to everybody tomorrow. Correct, Christina? Any last words Christina you can think of or we covered it? We are adjourned, thank you ladies and gentlemen, or ladies, both of you just do ladies and gentlemen for all the work you've done tonight and the timekeeper, you're okay too. Good night.